It is seven P M on Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and three. We're gonna open the special media village board. You will help please.
I am trustee Chris Camples.
Yeah.
Jen Talbot.
Here.
Jen Christensen.
Here.
Phil Motici.
Here.
Nathan Mons.
Here.
Patrick Yarlem.
Here.
President Rick Worm.
Here.
Treasurer friend Onavani.
Here.
I clerk Sandy Mountain here and public works supervisor Brett Fergie.
Here.
And for the record, uh, water waste water operator Jason Boes is here.
Do we have any special meeting minutes?
Nope.
Wonderful. We'll run the president. I have no report. Sandy?
Nothing.
Treasurer?
Nothing.
As a reminder during special meetings, you can only talk about what's on the agenda. So if it's not on the agenda, you're not allowed to talk about it.
There you go. Utilities.
We've got a great discussion on filter water.
Oh. Microphone's right behind you. You can sit there if you want to. You just have to turn it on.
Yeah. Swerve.
If you turn it on. Then yes.
Okay.
You just can't hear it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're here to talk about the current situation, current uh condition of the iron. Uh, that is your main source of water, which is your iron bacteria and iron for uh water saving, which. Or right there, Chris has importable, um, that's what that takes out.
It's tasty.
Our water doesn't look quite like that, but.
This is good.
That filter takes that out of the water.
It's green.
Um, there goes, um, that's what it does. In the past, um, the filter's been very reliable, um, although we do have every. Um, six to eight years, we do have a media following and that in the past for party or cleaning or media replacement. Uh, we started at issues right after the, let's say the tower project, we can be fast cycling all the time. Um, and running quite frequently, whereas normally it's not. Every couple days, um. After that, we noticed, um, filters going into backwash more than it normally would. Um. Usually if those are backwashed, it's supposed to clean itself, it'll be more operation, it takes off and progress as normal. We weren't seeing the. Uh, the gains back on the building, we were seeing performance come back after the backwashing, it was going back to the pretty. Um. Free plugin, um, done with water. We weren't seeing a tiered iron engine that's many water on the system. But it was causing it to backwash frequently, well frequently, or Brett, George, other staff members have monitored before they're to make sure that that's backwash the wrong time of day. Because it's going even the backlog for normally would and more frequently. You remember what we were getting for long times?
We would get the twenty five hours.
Yeah.
If you don't watch it, it goes, y- it yeah, it just depends if it goes into low pressure, uh. Backwash or whatever, but yeah, it could be six, it could be eight, it could be four.
So what we were getting twenty five more hours. Three cycles. That was because it was building this, we built me up a map on the top of media, so we were backwashing, it's cleaning up, we were good for twenty five hours. The only reason we're getting twenty five hours and not more. Because the filter's programmed to get twenty five hours and backwash every twenty five hours now anymore. Um, we've made changes since on the operation of the filter, we've limited flow to the filter, which should eliminate stress on the filter. But we weren't seeing the recovery even at that. So, um, let's say. June, June, we sent samples out to a community of water, all the investigators, which should be in their packet. Um. In your packet is a cleaning procedure that we talked about a little bit. Well, we did find out in the other investigation that they they put together was we found excessive sulfur bacteria growing. Um, both naturally occurring in the water from the wells. And it is basically growing biofilm and dehydrating inside the filter media itself. So this is why like those in the backwash is cleaning it all out because basically stuff is being done. Um, so they keep it in the last page of the media. So that's our media, the filter, now we can pull the samples and we go off to the web. Right is the media that's followed, or sorry, left is the media is followed by this media after is cleaned with their treatment process that's in the packet. Um, so it does work, it does clean up. Standard chlorine is not clean, standard acid does not clean it, so we have to get inventive with chemistry to get it clean. So because of that, is why we're all here today. Because if it was just a quick cleaning, we'd be over and done with it and everything would be back online. And that's what we're hoping for. When we set these samples up to have some analysis done, we know exactly what was caused it, as opposed to just going in and changing out the media like it had been in the past. So what they came back was a cleaning procedure, the targets of biofilm and product media, which generally consists of a polysaccharide base layer and embedded bacteria. It's basically just slime. The bacteria is trying to secrete polysaccharide. It's anaerobic, and it also happens to some anaerobic bacteria that dies off, who's uh, because it's trying to attach itself to other polymolecules. Um, it also says in the packet, it's not impacted by chlorine.
Hydrochloric acid. In the cleaning procedure. They talk about. Where do I get to it? This volume of chemical. Should I highlight this? Four hundred and sixty nine gallons of hydrochloric acid, two hundred and eight gallons of glycolic acid. And another similar ten thousand gallons from our water system. That is not something that we have the staff here to do. Uh, nor is it set up to have a contain clean and place system on the filter itself. The other issue that we run into is the filter is twenty plus years old, twenty five, right somewhere around there. Um.
Maybe eight, yeah.
And the filter has never had a thorough structural inspection done on it. We've had West Tech, the company that manufactured the filter, had to do a quick inspection. They basically popped open the filter, reached to pull the big chuck rust out. That was their inspection. They were like, yep, you got rust, okay. So because of that, because we know we have have issues with the filter, because in. One of these other inspection reports from W Q I. It basically says that the media, not so much the media, but the water can become corrosive. And try to attach to to metals. Once the metal's exposed. The biofilm or the media or the. Um, bacteria that's in our raw water is just going to continue to to break it down. So what we're proposing. Instead of doing this cleaning procedure right now because of the safety concerns. Is change the media out, which we've done in the past. That way we start with fresh, that way we don't have to worry about cleaning the media or doing anything else. While the media is out, inspect the filter, have a thorough inspection done. Gauge the thickness of the steel, gauge the paint that's in there, get options for repair, or if it even makes sense, try to try to do this in a step procedure. And then while we are waiting for the report back on this, on the on the filter inspection and the structural inspection. Possibly set up an injection for a biofilm destroyer that should maintain that media until we decide what we're going to do next. But we really don't want to feed it any high strength acid. We don't feed it any high strength chlorine to where it might break down that filter. Uh, structure even more. And we know we've had that problem because we had to pour that curb. Was that last year?
If Sandy goes, if, could you bring that filter picture up again, Sandy, please?
Yeah.
And I don't know if it'll show what the board approved. Um. Yeah, so if you look at the very, but sorry, Jason, if you look at the very bottom, that's what. You, the board approved, um, because that is what we call the under drain. And if you can see right there, there's a little handhold right there and that, yep. That is what, uh, West Tech, what Jason was referring to, the West Tech opened, we had the filter drain. And if you stick your hand in there, you can literally pull out chunks of rust. Um, the the under drain is what we believe is deteriorating. So that is Jason's fear of putting, our fear of putting all this acid through this, we don't know what's going to do.
It may come back out?
Yeah.
What's that? It may come back up?
Yeah.
So if if the structure's solid, once you get in there, you're then cleaned up. Well, assuming you're going to clean it once you get the media out.
Yep.
To make sure there's not a film left that you start over, just throwing stuff in there.
Ideally, yes.
So if they get in there and inspect and find out, can it be treated similar to the water tower where the inside can be cleaned, epoxy?
So here's where it gets interesting. So because of where those openings are at the base of that filter. It is very difficult to get into those crevices. Um, that is a question for West Tech or whoever's going to propose to. Seal and paint like the tower was into those crevices and see if they can gain access to it. Um, when we spoke with Matt Hanson on Friday, he indicated that he had experience with those and there were there were issues getting all surfaces re coated. If there was a problem because of all the nooks and crannies and everything else. There is a possibility where it could be retrofitted. Where a different different base could be put under there and other things, but that's that's a large scale project. And and honestly, the village has gotten their money worth, money's worth out of it. And even if the media is replaced, it's still functioning. Those those uh, solenoid valves that are on there for backwashing, that still works, the air system works, the boosters work, everything works. They're they're in very good shape. It's only the structure we're concerned about after we figure out what we're going to do with media long term.
In that picture, the pipe flowing into the opening for all the.
Backwash.
Backwash rust comes out.
Yeah.
For people that don't know.
So, so that's an outflow system?
No, gravity from the top down through the bottom. Um, the very top pipe over on the left, that kind of goose necks or nineties out of the top of the filter. That is a, um, that's coming out of a reservoir. At the top where that seam right above that red handle valve is, you can see a seam in the structure.
Right there.
Yep, right there. That is the base of the reservoir. It flows through that ninety down into that manifold system. Those valves basically directed to each cell. Or to the drain below.
So there's actually four cells in that tank.
So so just for clarification, the tank itself is the filter?
Yes.
And what's in the, and there's one something inside there.
In that.
Right, right. I just, it it's like a pool, so there's ever it's much bigger, much better, much.
Yeah, there there's a, there's a.
It's not pressurized, it's only gravity.
No, it's all gravity.
We're not, we're not pressurizing it and setting it through. It's just tricking down from the top and kind of going.
So we, so we actually think the the now the metal structure is starting to rust out.
Yes.
At the bottom.
We know it was just the expected life life expectancy.
So this would be a better question for Matt Hanson because he fielded this question, I want to say a little while ago, uh, we he, we discussed it briefly on on Friday. Um, he said that they were originally expected from U S Filter, who originally owned on the tank. To be substantially longer than twenty five, thirty years. Um, now it sounds like U S Filter and West Tech, who now owns U S Filter, is saying twenty five years tops. So.
We are not. That's a ninety nine.
I don't doubt they do, but it's it's a whole nother, like, so I don't want to get too far into.
Right.
What's to do in the future, so we get that inspection.
Do we have a a hole or leak in this before?
Yeah, that's.
The same one, right?
That's what, that's why we put the concrete around there, because that under drain is rotting.
How many years ago was that? I was two. Yeah, it was last year. So that was like the one of the first things.
So that bottom seam honestly could have been leaking for a while. We just noticed it last year because of how dry it was. We thought it was always the tank sweating.
Yeah.
Last year, we finally realized the tank wasn't sweating, it's coming from that seam.
Yeah. Because that sweat, when it, when the plant runs, all that coffee, that thing, we have. It's always sweating.
When you just declare, when you say replace the possibility of future replacing the base.
Yeah.
You would leave the reservoir and just replace the base where the media goes, if it is possible.
Apparently it's possible.
Okay, cool. Wasn't it originally, you talked about it's cutting the bottom half up, right? Like, and then just replacing that?
Matt said that he had to do that on one.
Yeah.
Previously.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that that thing, she takes out the roof of the building.
Yeah, and we don't, and I really don't want to get too far into that right now because.
Yeah, we're getting.
Yeah, sorry.
So.
Yeah.
We really just want to get that inspection. Yeah.
And that's.
So we're kind of leaning towards the media change out simply be, you know, like Jason said, because for one, we don't want all that acid on site. We would have to hire a company to come in and do that anyway, to do it safely, properly, to get everything plumbed the way we need to.
They do the cleaning as well at the inside of the tank once?
No.
Media was up.
Probably, I'm assuming probably not, but.
The 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 type of filter that this is, because it's a gravity filter, limits what we can do with the filter. It limits how we can backwash the filter. It's not like your full filter where it's forced.
Right.
Back through and then back out. You literally only have, there's those green pipes at the bottom, they're they're bubblers. They they just bubble it up and then you're hoping it floats to the top and comes out. If it doesn't float to the top and come out, it's stuck in that kind of now. So you can't really set up a control loop where that's set up. Um, we have ideas of how to do that, but it's not set up to do that now. So.
Would. Better systems?
There are pressurized systems.
Right now, there is.
Well, no, but in the timeframe to change out media or something like that, is there a delay or hiccup or anything?
No, we wanted to discuss it because we were, we were waiting on doing it to be figured out what what the exact problem was, because we didn't want to continue to change media. And find out it was it was problematic now.
Oh, I would, I would be interested in knowing about something of if whoever, you know, we hired to do the media, if there's somebody else we could hire to do the cleaning as well. Because you're, you're leaving that residual slime in there.
So.
You don't want to grow.
So we're hoping the media comes out. The media is where most of it is. There is going to be some surface, but there's also. Um, in, and we didn't send this because this is, this gets really in-depth into. Into proteins, the bacteria proteins and all kinds of other stuff. If anybody wants to look at it, I can send it to them. Um, your raw water contains it. So unless we start with a maintenance dose on whatever's there, once the media is clean, it's going to come right back. So that's why we wanted to get a biofilm destroyer and set that up. Get that on a maintenance dose, and that will clean the reservoir. If we, if we set the dose at enough, we also have to permit for it though, because it's an injectable chemical. Um, and get that on a routine until we decide what we're going to do in the future.
Sounds great.
Um, so we found a. Uh. Invoice from when we had the media change out last time. This was in twenty fifteen. However, this does not cost, uh. Uh, this does not indicate the cost of disposal. We couldn't locate that, correct?
I, yeah, Sandy, Sandy, you looked and we couldn't.
I don't think that, I don't know that we disposed of it. I believe it might have been included in their cost because it does say removal.
Anyway, I would be, I would be shocked if it did, but yes, we couldn't find it. So we had. Three dumpsters.
Uh, two or three, yeah.
Obviously, two or three roll offs.
Yeah.
It does have radium in it, so it does have to get classified and get permitted for disposal. Last time we had to pull it out and sat in the parking lot, and so it was. Um, deemed safe for the landfill and they approved it. And there was this whole box. Um, this isn't a quick. Take, pull it out, throw it back in. This is, the totem's going to be down. If we have to run it, we have to bypass the filter, which our water doesn't look like that, but it's not, it's not going to be as clean as it was. Um, there's other ish, others, other things we can do for that if it is going to be down for a while, because we're not talking about just swapping media that day. We're talking about pulling the media out. Getting the inspection done, which might take a day, it might take two days, I don't know. And then putting the media back in, getting it online. Then we need two set of samples twenty four hours apart that need to pass for total call form. That would run the Rockford. So we're talking multiple days, possibly a week or more that's totally okay. But there's no alternative. The alternative is we wing it and go from there, but I prefer not to do that.
Well, that's really no other.
Yeah.
No.
The alter, the alternative was what we did last time was we just changed the media out. And I want to say either it was clean or the media was changed once prior to that also.
But that still takes some time.
That does take.
It all takes.
I would say fifteen was the first time it was done. Changed the media.
There, uh, yeah, yeah, there's been a.
We've had conflicting, we thought it was, we thought that was, and then we heard rumors that there, it's something had been done.
I've been, I've been there since oh five and.
Yeah, that's something that they had pulled it out, cleaned it, put it back in, hired one, but we don't know for sure, except for two thousand and fifteen, that we know for sure.
Twenty fifteen is the only one we know about, that's.
Unless your predecessors are like, you know, put it in the back of a pickup truck, cleaned it, put it back in, I don't know.
I don't know. Don't know.
No, so.
But no, as far as I know, like I said, oh five, and that was only eight years after we started the system.
Yeah.
Or seven years after the start of the system. That was the first time I ever, the media being changed at all.
Yeah, uh, the company that did it last time.
Oh.
Um, all services A. For all service contractors out of.
Well.
They did it last time.
Basically, what we're trying to decide now is, um. If we want to just try to nurse this along in and budget for it. Next fiscal or if there, I mean, it's a chance to take, or if we just say, hey, let's get the ball rolling and it costs what it costs.
Well, we might. We might end up having to do that.
We might have, and that's the thing, we budget for it next fiscal, we might be doing it in two months and it is what it is, so.
And that's one thing that we talked about, so. You could budget it for next fiscal year, and then the whole concern of that is. Between now and the next fiscal year, we already know that we're running into backwashing problems, and if the media plugs completely. We will have to buy.
You're right.
Sorry. The, uh, if it, if it plugs completely, we will either have to bypass the filter or do an an emergency expense to get it done, then.
What's, what's the cost?
Twenty fifteen. We're assuming this is just media alone.
Never mind.
It, it doesn't. We don't have estimates yet.
I, I can only say.
We paid twenty five thousand for two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, and that's not the inspection, that's not anything else. That was just media as well.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And they did, so you have money laying around against me to do this?
So.
No, but.
I don't know.
So that was.
I miss so much.
That was kind of the other reason we brought it up.
That'll be fine.
Maybe, I mean.
And that's why we wanted to point out that we don't know if this includes.
Fifty.
Disposal. Yes.
Okay.
So.
Is it possible to get it from snowplows?
Um, it would determine. Uh, it would be up to all services schedule. Uh, I'm sure we need to get a price on that first, and we need to determine who's going to do the inspection of the filter.
Yeah, is everybody okay with them going any steps?
Uh, no, no, I'm un, I am uncomfortable with you having that conversation.
Oh.
Because it's not on the agenda for that.
All right.
For just discussion, but if there is no, um, if there is no negative feedback, then they can get us whatever we need next to vote upon.
Yes.
Which would be when.
Which is the next.
Whenever you figure out what it's going to cost.
I want that to exceed. For we can't.
We can't go around anyways.
Today, next week.
More of it is.
Well, we should probably figure out what it's going to cost.
They're going to get something back to us so we can make a decision based off of all the information.
Yes, it's going to take a little bit.
It's going to take a bit to get.
Yeah.
Just find a note from Matt Hansen's review of the water plant filtration system from January of twenty fifteen, that the village was responsible for disposal of the media. I still can't find the information under that cost, but I do have a note that we worked.
Well, if it's that, they're told it was safe to dump in the landfill. Like, I imagine it's probably only the cost of dumpsters going to the landfill.
Um, I could not find any dumpster receipts.
And I don't believe we will be able to dump, to dispose of in that landfill again because of the five pukal carry limit. And we are right around five, if I remember the last time we disposed.
Yep.
It was the same issue with the sludge.
Yep.
So it'd be a lot. You don't need the radium.
No, it probably go to Winnipeg or. Yeah.
Yeah, chances are we can just go off the road.
That's what I just, yeah, I didn't know if that would meant both of them.
Yeah, it's five, five is not a, is not a high limit or a high number for this, this type of material.
Thank you for taking the time.
Good numbers.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
All right, thanks.
That was next up.
You need this off?
Yes, please. Save my batteries, I never remember to turn it off. Thank you.
Anything further for utilities? I'll call you.
Okay. All right, parks.
All right, um, a discussion of possible approval of the D F to less mobile food truck to sell food, community park on September sixteen, twenty twenty three.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion for approval.
What's going on in the park?
Uh, D F sell us those tacos, mobile food truck to sell food in the community park on September sixteen, twenty twenty three.
Say.
All right, so Nathan makes a motion to approve. Yeah, you said it better than I did.
Dia de.
Dia de los tacos, mobile food truck to sell food in the community park on September sixteen, twenty twenty three, John seconds. Discussion.
What's going on in the park on September?
Uh, originally, we approved the food, um, two food trucks, the Kona Ice and the. Um, head and food, or well, sorry, just the head and's right. I'm sorry, am I saying that correctly? But there's two on that list.
Just had.
Just had, anyways.
But wasn't somebody else approved later?
Yes, yes.
Uh, this is for a football, correct?
Yes, this is the final home football game.
Home football game. So we're just making sure that all of them are approved from the board to be out there at the same time.
This is the only one that is asked for this date.
Oh.
Nobody else has asked for this date. There is another mobile food truck who filled out an application today that if it gets approved was also like this date, but none of the others have asked for this date.
Has that for, that's for you, okay.
Long as we're approving everybody, I don't have a problem.
Also, we're the only ones asked for approval.
Well, and then I guess the only other question, some of you shows up without approval.
They all know now.
They leave.
They all know now.
Uh, notification and understandings, I think, are clearer than they want.
Yep.
Better not.
Further discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just the same, uh, uh, people that we see at the fire station. Is this the same truck that we, or or group, organization that we see at the fire station, uh?
Yeah.
It's a different one.
That's coffee and green.
It's down at Bennys.
Bill, what this is for is because of the tower that is missing, um, concessions cannot be done by the. The junior tackle organization. And they're losing some of that, and to compensate for that, they've asked, or they talk, uh, some of the food trucks. Um, have graciously entertained and been parking out there with our approval because we don't allow food trucks to be within a certain distance from the park. So all this is doing is kind of allowing them to be as close to the park as they are going to be, so they can help out and be a kind of fundraiser for the organization.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we're approving, Chris.
Okay. I think that's very nice. That's, that's good, yeah.
Any further discussion? First of all.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say aye.
Um, before we get to your next item on the agenda, I do need to verify that I can actually hear those attending remotely. Mark, can you speak for a second?
Yes, hello. Good to be with everybody.
Hold on, we can't hear you.
The guy on the bottom looks awful dapper.
I hope I'm the guy on the bottom.
And it looks like Magneto.
I can't tell if it's a Zoom issue or a computer issue.
Testing, testing.
There you go. Now we can hear you.
All right, good to be with everybody. I can't see the TV screen, but I'm hoping that I am the guy that looks dapper on the bottom of the screen.
Uh, it was not, it was.
It's a headshot, not a, it's not a live feed.
Fair enough.
Do you want to start, Mark, or do you want Nathan?
Yes. Yeah, well, I'd like to, I'm going to start by giving a little bit of a procedural overview. Because this is, uh, a somewhat unusual procedure and and probably, uh, novel to Davis Junction. Um, a couple of months ago, of course, as you all remember, uh, the, uh, board. Uh, we didn't have, I don't think, full attendance on on the particular night, but the board voted down. Uh, the zoning proposal by, uh, Sedum Solar, which involved, uh, special use permit, a site plan approval. And the E P O S, uh, development permit that was voted down. Uh, when something is voted down. There are, if if a community wants to revisit the matter. There are a couple of mechanisms by which it can happen. The most common one and the one you have. Probably heard of, whether you've employed it or not, is a pretty straightforward motion to reconsider. That's not what's before you tonight because, uh, the rules dictate that that can only happen at the very next meeting. There's, it's time bound. So, uh, in the course of exploring, and and by the way, I should say upfront. Uh, I am agnostic as to what the ultimate fate of this is, but, uh, in the interest of allowing the village to, um. Get the outcome it wants to have, even if it's reaffirming the the previous decision. Um, the way to do this at this point in time is called a a motion to renew. And essentially, it's a fancy way of saying it's an opportunity to redo the earlier motion and attempt once again. Uh, to pass it. Uh, we, uh, the village has adopted this, uh, in its code by reference to Robert's Rules of Order, and it's it's provided for in that. Um, nothing on the ground in terms of the proposal has changed since you last saw it. But the parties have been in, uh, negotiations to. Uh, regarding the terms of a proposed community benefit agreement. And I will note that the commended, community benefit agreement itself is actually not on your agenda tonight, so. You know, we can discuss it. Ultimately, that vote, I I believe will take place. Uh, at a subsequent meeting, or you could vote tonight and then just ratify it at a subsequent meeting if if you wish to do so. But the basic term, well, uh, maybe I'll let Nate address the basic terms. It's a pretty straightforward community development agreement, um, or community benefit agreement in which. The, uh, prospective developer would give a financial contribution designed to offset.[1732.38] The village's administrative and regulatory burdens associated with the project over the life of the project and. Um, the the most recent iteration I saw, um. Yeah, was uh, was is a is a one hundred thousand dollar, one time one hundred thousand dollar. Contribution that wouldn't take place immediately would take place once the site was operational, which means selling electricity, so. Um, if the project doesn't come to fruition, of course, that financial payment wouldn't be necessary. So in terms of procedure tonight, um, although it is going to be a lengthy motion. And I suspect it'll probably be one that I read to you and somebody says, yes, that's my motion.
It for Nathan, so he is ready to make the entire motion when you give him the go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I will simply note then in passing that there is, um. There's no particular super majority vote required. It's a. It's an ordinance, so just like any ordinance, it's gonna require uh, four uh, yeses in order to pass and anything short of four. Uh, it would fail. Um, so I will let the motion be made and seconded, and then I assume it'll be turned over for more discussion and and we can talk about. Um, any any differences and one last note before um, Nathan makes the motion. The agreeing, uh, the ordinance is identical to what it was last time with one exception. In section four A, this is page number six. On uh, section four A, which lists out the conditions of approval. There is one additional condition that's been added to what was previously considered. And that condition is that the parties uh, enter into a community benefit agreement. Uh, within thirty days. And if that doesn't happen. I've essentially told you, there's uh, it's a pretty straightforward. A proposed deal, you essentially know all the relevant terms already, at one time, one hundred thousand dollar payment. Uh, in return for, um. The village's uh, burdens associated with um, being the host of the project. And uh, anyway, if that uh, deal isn't entered into within thirty days. Um, this uh, the action taken tonight, if it's favorable. Uh, would ultimately become annulity simply because one of the stipulated conditions would not have been met. Um, so that is procedurally where we're at and I will stop talking and Nate, it's your it's your moment to shine.
Pursuant to Robert's orders of rule thirty eight, I move to renew the motion to approve ordinance number twenty three dash twelve. Granting the zoning relief requested by Sedum Solar LLC and the property owners. Including a special permit authorizing a community solar project at one, three, two, nine, six, route seventy two. And the eight Ag, AG Agriculture District and C three Commercial District. Issuance of an open space overlay district development permit and site plan approvals. Subject to the following amendment adding a new condition to the special use approval as subsection ten to section four. Dot A dot one of the ordinance as follows. That applicant enter into an executive, a community benefit agreement with the village governing the respective rights and responsibilities of the applicant. And the village will with respect to the project within thirty days of the adoption of this. Ordinance. If such development agreement is not executed with within said timeframe. And the property not developed in ordinance therewith therewith. This ordinance shall be null and void and no further effect without any further action by the village. And any approvals granted herein shall be deemed to have been denied.
Alright, Nathan makes a motion to renew the motion to approve ordinance number twenty three dash twelve, Jen seconds that motion. Enter discussion.
Any questions?
Thanks for the hard work, Nate. We'll call.
I'm sorry, I thought Bill was coming to say something.
No, I I was I'm ready to go for it.
Okay, alright, sorry. Aggressive tonight.
Jen?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Chris?
No.
Patrick?
No.
That motion is approved at seven thirty five.
Yeah, four yeses.
So then add a um, whenever your next meeting is, um. We will put the uh, community better uh, benefits agreement on the agenda. For approval that passes and is executed, uh, that everything rolls forward. So thank you for bearing with me.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And the next meeting will be on the tenth, so next Tuesday, I'll put that on the agenda for people.
And promote. And I've, yes, I mean, of course, um, the the whether the terms are satisfactory or not is your call from a policy perspective. Um, I have reviewed the agreement from a legal standpoint and have uh, no concerns with it. Um, it, you know, so that will be, uh, if anyone has questions, of course, they can run them by me. Um, but in terms of legal form, um, there's there's no issue.
Does anybody want Mark or need an attorney here in our next meeting to discuss the community benefit agreement? At what does Mr. Jacoby plan on attending next Tuesday's meeting?
Um, yet to be determined, probably. I, you know, I was sort of under the impression that there would be some discussion tonight on the community benefit agreement. Um, and it's, I was under the impression too that there may even be a vote on it, uh, because it is germane to the subject matters on the agenda. Um, I suppose if if uh, that. That final votes, you know, reserved towards Tuesday, I'll have to check with my client to see if they want me there, but um. You know, my guess is that if things are wrapped up, then then I then I won't be there.
Uh, Mark, I'm gonna put your uh, attendance based upon Mr. Jacoby's attendance. Oh, you're you're muted here, Mark.
Thanks, sorry about that. Um, yeah, of course, that's fine. Uh, to Mr. Jacoby's point, although. Um, in my view, the matter yeah, wouldn't be uh, the appropriate subject of of an actual substantive vote tonight. We certainly can discuss it and and maybe that will be depending on where the discussion goes, that might be outcome determinative of. Whether or not Mr. Jacoby or Sedum Solar needs a presence next week. If there are. Concerns or questions about the agreement, which I believe has been circulated. Um, this would probably be an appropriate time to hash it out while there's legal counsel here and the other side is represented as well.
It was in the board packet.
Anybody need clarification on it?
You know, I will just briefly address the comment on uh, on me being at the look alike of a of a evil superpower, uh. Um, I don't, I don't know if you guys remember this, I actually represented the village.
Yes.
You did.
Go, um, okay, yeah, uh, in that, uh, and there was the, uh, it was a mobile home community that. You had a issue with the building, um. Building permits and I worked with Dan on that and we we were in litigation, so I, you know, maybe you don't recognize me from the uh. Photograph that the firm takes and posts all over the internet, but yeah, same guy, uh.
More of the uh, Michael Fassbender than uh.
There you go, there you go. I'll I'll take it as a compliment then.
Yes, I believe Mr. Jacoby was hired by our insurance company to represent us in that litigation.
Yep, yep. That's correct.
Nothing else?
I'll be further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further completes my agenda. Alright. Community development, uh, that community development events.
So. Um, our for our sesquennial event, do we want to? Start thinking about a budget? Or do we wanna talk about? Things that we may wanna do for the sesquennial first and see what costs are before we set a budget.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have we put on social media in the back of the water bills to contact you if there was anything? Have anybody reached out to you?
Just the one like six months ago. How are we gonna set a budget up for something we don't have any idea?
If we wanna look at what we might wanna do first versus.
We set a budget for an entire village, we have no idea what's gonna happen.
Well, you can plan for some stuff, I mean.
Well, that's the thing, so it's an educated guess.
That's why I just said if we wanna just, if I start looking into things that we could possibly do. Because.
If you have any ideas.
Casey's pizza for everyone.
Sorry, what what year is this exactly?
Twenty twenty five.
So at what at what point in the year?
Yeah, something with June, June, uh.
Gives us the opportunity to start getting a plan ahead of time, so we're not trying to scramble at last minute. If we need, if we're looking at budgetary as being too much, we could budget half one year, half next year.
The twenty twenty sixth budget, right?
Twenty twenty one, twenty.
Yes.
Cause it'll be. So May, May will go into twenty six.
Yeah. So it'll be twenty six, next year, twenty six.
So it's it's very possible the budget, I mean, depending on what we spend, and we could say we're gonna do fifty thousand, we could do twenty five each year.
Yeah, that's that's what I was thinking, cause I was looking at activities, if we could just be like, hey, you know what, if I just look at activities.
I don't know, we're gonna need to see this water filter thing first. That'll be twenty four.
Alright, let's throw uh, throw ideas together.
Fan, beer garden, carnival rides.
I'm all for the carnival rides and food and.
Pellet zoo.
All these things need to be housed and peopled, so we need whatever we do. Oh, obviously, we don't have everyone, a huge volunteer network.
Who have ideas, would you like us to just email them to you?
It doesn't matter unless we wanna find a time and get together and talk about it too.
Well, I know Rhonda and I have ideas if you wanna meet us here at Villa Tallone, okay?
One big circle.
Coming in tomorrow's meeting?
You're gonna post it? Do it Friday.
Let me, yeah.
Are we going to need um, a firework or two winters?
That's that. That was another possibility because I was gonna reach out. To Doug to see what we could, what type of a small show we could get.
Lately, these have been putting on some fireworks and apparently been getting rave reviews. So I don't know, maybe you wanna, I'm assuming they're using something local, but asking how much they're spending, because I'm interested to know how much they're spending to get these.
Can we get a uh, benefit if we do like?
Well, that's why I was wondering, you know what, if we still use.
Well, yeah, it does that too, but I I suspect they're probably using the big company as we use. I'm just interested in how much they're spending. Right. People in Byron rave about those fireworks, they just did one this last weekend and everybody loved it. So I'm like, what are they spending and what are they getting?
Yeah, cause that's what I was thinking, so I didn't wanna go to him without saying, hey, you know, we're think, we're, we have this celebration. You know, then we're gonna have a three weeks later, we're gonna have the Fourth of July. What can you do for us? Yeah. Type of a thing.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to be good mornings after the Saturday.
Isn't that every day?
Right.
I see what you're saying now.
About five in the morning, me and Rick can be here.
You wanna look at your schedule and send some dates out for, can see what's what's available for you.
Okay, and then moving on to our Halloween. Did you talk? Two weeks ago about what we discussed.
Had not heard back from you with a thought.
Okay.
That they were on board.
So, um, we had brought up, like, um, I don't even know how long, I'll say a month ago. About the possibility of doing a drive through or doing it or doing handing it out. And doing it on Halloween. Now, I've had an organization reach out. For like between the Halloween and our Christmas to help out with stuff. And. I brought up to them, hey, we had talked about doing different stations and handing it out. How would you like to help us with that? They were on board, they, um, so we talked about having a station in Ogo Crossings. Sandy do having a station by the water tower and me being at the fire station. If we hand it out in three different spots on Halloween. For and say, you know, they will be handed out until gone. I don't know how you guys feel about that. I think it's a great idea because.
You're paying a company to do that?
No, we're gonna do it. I'm I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do. It's volunteer, it's an organization.
Yeah, has volunteered.
Has volunteered.
That lives in the, that runs in the village?
Yes, that lives, yes.
Yeah, they volunteered with us before.
It's 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 Grace Fellowship.
Oh.
Yeah.
And there should be states where.
They they would do old crossings and Sandy said she would do the water tower and I would do a handout at the fire station. To cover this original side of town.
I have no issue with that.
I had none with it all, it's a great idea.
And then we said we would just hand them out.
Till you're gone.
Tell or yeah, till they're gone, whatever. So I was thinking either, cause normally I've been doing about like two hundred bags and I figured if I. Upped it to like three hundred and then a hundred at each.
Yep.
Stop at each station and then just hand them out.
That'd probably be good.
Yep.
Till they are gone.
And are you doing you? I think in years past, you've done it, so that's also like a trick or treating bag.
Yes, it's a trick or treating bag.
Yeah.
And I and I have a lot of.
Stopping.
I have a lot of variety of things kinda left over, so they're all gonna be.
And but I I think that encouraging people to stop at one of us first.
Right.
Did before you start your rounds, depending on where you start, was a great idea too.
And that way, if, let's say I run out the fire station, I said, hey. Go to the water tower, there's, that's the next one, hand them out. You know, go grab one there as you're going by. For the thousands of trick or treaters we have in our subdivision, they should easily be.
Yep.
Gone, but that's kinda what we're thinking, just any thoughts on it?
Sounds good.
Okay, and that's all I have, cause I can't talk about the other things.
Do you need something agenda for next week?
The what?
What would you like on the agenda for next week?
Um.
You need the Christmas party, are you ready for that?
I do have my date set for that. So, yeah, we could talk about.
So we need to discuss the Christmas party that's scheduled for.
I know I do, and I have to double check for December second.
Discussion on Christmas party on December second?
Yep.
I will add that to.
Hold on, how to get that out?
I will add that to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I I was kinda upset too, right?
I'm done.
I put this under you, sorry.
What?
Finance.
Uh, no, I don't actually. Um, so on the agenda, you will see an invoice from Visacne Contracting, um. Visacne? And this is the company that we had hired to fix our fire tight system during the first lightning strike over at the water. Plant, um, the work that they completed was not to repair our fire tight system and instead install the cheap three hundred dollar system. And so I did have a conversation with Dan Bolin regarding this invoice and I told him I just wanted your guys' feedback. While this, I believe that this invoice is an unfair amount to pay for the work that we received based upon the work that we asked him to do. Comparatively, um, I don't know that expending the funds to uh, use our attorney. To argue when there is potential arguments back and forth on what is a fair dollar price. Is worth it and it might be worth just paying this invoice as is for work that we. It does not cover the work that we had requested be done, but then we can just choose to not work with this company further.
Goal isn't but the means.
Yes, yes.
We could move on from there.
Rick was right, the goal was met, but the the scope of work that was to be completed was not done.
You wouldn't have to have an attorney to have conversations, you just don't pay them and see what their.
So that was my conversation with Dan Bolin was whether or not we could not pay them, whether we could argue with them, and he said. That there is some argument, but they also have an argument that they did do some work, so they are entitled to some compensation.
We try making an offer of three grand and see if they'll take it.
You are a lot of talking, he just wanna talk to you.
Pretty much. Um, so if there is a male in this room that wants to call and talk to Jesse Visacne, you are more than welcome to do so to argue this. Particular invoice, he is not interested in talking to myself, Brenda or Jen.
I'm really. You look them happy to have a conversation.
Uh, Rick actually has a great relationship with us, so if you'd like to call him.
If you want someone that does. That we can ruin, that's that's fine too.
Alright, that's on me.
I don't like.
So we'll just move that to next week's agenda, that's where it was originally going to be found before this became a special meeting.
Alright, so take that off one of these finances.
Very good. Spartan, I know. That it, Brendan?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go, we're done.
I can actually get that for you, cause we had to replace it a week later when it got hit again.
Perfect. That's even better than those numbers.
Yep.
Alright. Orders enforcement.
Uh, nothing to, uh, report at this point.
Streets?
Uh, go ahead and make a motion for resolution twenty-three dash forty-nine, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of quote from Assistant Tree Service LLC removal of trees and stump grinding over crossing subdivision right of ways for sidewalk project.
Seconds.
Don makes a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash forty-nine. Nathan seconds that motion. Any discussion on it?
So are we footing that whole bill I was looking in the packet, or are we just taking the stump grinding? Are they?
No, we're paying for the entire removal of the tree and stump.
Okay. I believe this is so that we can do sidewalk repair work. These are all trees that are
Yes.
That's what it said. But I didn't know, because there's some spots I saw zero, so I didn't know if that meant that, like, the homeowner was picking something up or
No, these are trees that are in the right of way, so they can't be replanted.
Correct. Right.
Theoretically.
And these are the ones that were planted from the
Keep an eye out to make sure it doesn't happen.
Homeowners, whoever.
Yes.
Over the years.
Well, I just didn't know if
Just over the years, whoever.
The home association or
Yeah.
Now, we actually sent out a letter five years ago.
I remember we did send it out.
It was like a letter like five years ago, saying that you couldn't do any further planting, and then if we come in and need to remove the tree in, in the right of way, uh, to do any repairs, that we're not putting it back, and so I did look, and of the six homes, four of them had previously received that letter with the same homeowners, so four of them were aware, and the other two we reached out to.
Is it possible to send out another reminder letter of this nature, though that way when the community is questioning or curious about what's going on, it's just a gentle reminder while it's happening?
Except for, does our ordinance enforcement not know that, and then they would talk to someone here?
They, so we see it as if they go in now, and so since then, as people have attempted to add trees in the right of way, we stop them.
Right, so we
Cause they're messing up the sidewalks and the stool storm or the drains.
Tree you plant.
Yeah.
You can plant trees.
But you're not supposed to plant anything.
On your side of the sidewalk.
Yes, not at the right of way.
Right.
Well, some communities, not to further the discussion, but some communities require a developer to put one in the front yard and on the right of way. When I lived in Plankville, you had to have two in the yard and one in the right of so
Until it messes with the
Certain types of trees, uh, with You wouldn't put a willow there.
Some people do.
Poplar.
My neighbor just planted a willow.
I said you wouldn't put those in the right of I wouldn't say.
There is one in the right of way.
A willow?
Yes.
Oh, that's crazy.
We just took one out.
Yeah, we did.
My shed got lifted up my will. I hate to see what it does inside.
All right. So we're still in discussion.
No more discussion? That's great. Thank you.
There is, uh, money's a roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
John? Nathan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Brett, do you have anything to add to Sydney?
Well, it's seven fifty-three.
Um, no, we started, uh, crack ceiling today, so we'll be doing that for two weeks, and that's it.
Finished up the other project. Or by Jack.
Yes. I don't know if I can talk about
No, not on the agenda.
Uh, I'm sorry, John, I can't speak about that.
You'd like on the agenda for next week?
I know.
No, I think we covered it.
Yeah, I know, that's why I just
I don't know what I was thinking.
It's on the agenda? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. That is on the agenda.
I've not heard anything from LR since our last live podcast. It's not on our side.
All right, not hearing anything. Public?
We don't have any public.
It's actually a very sad moment. Yeah.
Yeah. No more of that now.
No, that's, um, that's the first time. So
Don was there to ask about crack filling?
Uh, a resident can ask about crack filling.
So, uh, I make a motion to adjutant?
Second.
Nathan makes a motion to adjutant. John second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Nobody cares.